I think we shouldn't be able, we should be able not to wear it, but.
Sure.
Somebody complain the town board.
In these extraordinary times, I'd like to welcome him to the August thirteenth meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have an adjournment, appeal number two thousand nineteen oh forty-nine Flying Point Associates. They've asked for an adjournment to September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Do you want to hear a motion?
Show movement, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a request for an extension. That's appeal number two thousand nineteen oh thirty-one, Scott Market. And do I hear, do I hear the, uh, a motion?
Show movement, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Marissa, you're on.
Appeal number twenty twenty eighteen, Annette Renner, twenty-six Pirate Street, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred thirteen three twenty-six, RA forty zoning. Variances under relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where existing lot is seventy-five hundred square feet and minimum lot size required is forty thousand square feet. Where existing lot width is seventy-five feet and minimum required is a hundred and fifty feet. Where proposed front yard setback is twenty-six feet and minimum required is fifty feet. Where proposed side yard setback is seventeen point nine feet and minimum required is twenty-five feet. Where proposed combined side yard is thirty-seven point nine feet and minimum required is fifty-five feet. Where proposed rear yard setback is thirty feet and minimum required is sixty feet. And where proposed impervious coverage is nineteen point four percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent.
Okay, who's first up here?
Amen.
Middle left? Okay. If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self the God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Kirk Jacobs, architect, two oh one Northwest Drive, Farmingdale, New York.
You have a fore.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Kirk Jacobs, architect, representing Mrs. Annette Renner. Mister and Misses Renner propose to replace their seventy-year-old house with a new dwelling. They plan to use it as a retirement house. Reeves Park has an unusual residential zoning situation. The zone is R forty, which requires the minimum lot area to be forty thousand square feet. There is not one property in this area that comes close to this requirement. Therefore, any property that would want to expand their existing footprint would have to appear before this board because of setback issues in lot size. Our lot is seventy-five hundred square feet, which is thirty-two thousand five hundred square feet, less than the required minimum. I submitted to the board a plot plan of the proposed dwelling and added to it an outline in red showing the current dwelling as it exists now. We're trying to maintain very similar setbacks as the existing house. For example, the existing front yard setback on the existing house is twenty-two point three feet. We're proposing twenty-six feet. Therefore, the similar placement of the new house will have a minimal impact on the neighborhood. In fact, it will have a positive impact replacing a seventy-year-old house. I've submitted to the board a site plan showing the subject house in blue and five houses in yellow that are all or partial two stories. The house directly across the street is quite similar to the proposed house. It has a one-story area with a shed roof and a two-story section with a gable roof. Our proposed dwelling will have a shed roof on the one-story area and a shed roof on the second-story area. They want the flat slope roof because they hope to add a solar feature to the house after it's built. This submission shows that we will not be setting a precedent in the neighborhood with a partial two-story house. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
We need to hear from, hold on one second.
Yep, who's next up?
You got anybody in the waiting room?
Yeah, sure.
He's for another application.
This is for Pirate Street?
Pirate Street.
To help.
That's it?
No.
Yeah, well, who's up next?
We're on the neck, we need to talk to somebody now, anybody that isn't revolving twenty-six Pirate Street.
That's the only one that are probably here today.
He's the architect, but I don't know from the public who else is here to speak on that one. Possibly Janine.
Take them off mute so we can ask them?
Yeah.
They all? Anybody can unmute themselves now if they'd like to say something?
Anybody to be here, heard on the Pirate Street application? Raise your hand.
So people that are in the waiting room, none of you are going to speak on about twenty-six Pirate Street, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay, good. So we do have somebody else coming in, but we're not sure what that's for.
It's a marriage.
It's taking hundreds of cells and they're like.
If any, if anybody would like to speak, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
It's Janine Gluesnow regarding twenty-six Pirate Street.
Okay, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self the God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Janine Gluesnow, twenty-six Pirate Street, Riverhead, New York, one one nine oh one.
Okay, state your case.
I looked over the plans and I have an objection to the setback that's being encroached upon where they're building a second story and a balcony that basically is going to be overlooking my yard, my kitchen, my driveway, my backyard.
Okay, were you listening to the prior comments by the architect?
I was actually looking at the plans that were emailed to me and yes, I heard the architect, but it was also very garbled. It didn't really come through clear.
Well, just to summarize, he did put together, uh, like a map. I don't know if you could see what I'm holding up, but probably not.
No, it's impossible to see, but I do have actually the plans from the town.
Okay, I realize that.
And I saw on the balcony on the second floor and, and it, we have an objection to that.
Okay, well, just so you understand, the variance is for setback and lot coverage. Uh, and as long as it complies. Hello?
The square footage is over the amount by a certain percentage.
Um, well.
For the buildable lot.
Right, no, I fully understand that, but almost every house in there does not comply to zoning because it's.
We're not talking about every other house, we're talking about this house.
Okay. All right, so I don't know if you're aware, but the architect provided three or four houses that are, one being across the street from the applicant, showing that it's a two-story.
I, I understand, we're fine with a two-story, but we don't want a balcony on the side of the house with a door entrance on the side of the house, next to the side of our house.
Okay.
That is going to be on top of our property. It's seven feet closer than it is now. It doesn't make sense, the, the architectural plans do not make sense. If you want a balcony, put it in the backyard where you have the property, not on the side, right next to our house, looking in our kitchen window.
Well, I did receive an email and I think all the board members did. Um, there was some talk about the two stories, um, but, and they, they questioned the height of the building. The town code allows for a thirty-five foot height. So I believe the building inspector feels that this is in compliance with the height requirements.
But it's not in compliance with a balcony looking onto over our driveway, in my kitchen window.
I understand your concern, but. I understand your concern, but I don't think we can regulate under the law whether or not it has a balcony or not. That, that's just something I'm saying as my opinion.
It's going over the setback, so it's not a concern, it's a reality, it's black and white, it's over the setback. So that means that it, that architectural plans need to be changed in order to fit into the circumference of the square footage that the house is supposed to be.
Have, have you seen the plot, the plot plan?
Yes, I have, I have seen the plot and I have seen the plans.
You saw the red line showing the existing house and you.
Correct.
Over the top of the proposed house?
And I've seen, and I've seen the plans.
So it's virtually the same footprint?
It's not.
So if I, if I look at the current existing home and I look at the west side of the home, where you concerned where the balcony is, currently it's twenty feet. The proposed setback on the side yard, it's looking like it's, um, twenty-three feet. So the house is going to be further away from that side. So I don't know where you're coming and saying that it's going to be closer based on what the survey is saying.
According to the plans that we saw, they were building it closer to our existing home by seven feet with, and with a balcony with a side door looking into our property.
I don't know what plans you were looking at, but the ones I have do not depict that. Doesn't show.
We got, well, we received the plans from the town.
Ma'am, is your only objection the balcony?
Well, we're talking.
I don't, yes, I don't mind that there's the height of, that's perfectly understandable. But, and also if they're putting in a basement, is the basement creating extra height for the, for the property?
That would have been up to the building inspector to tell, to say that. And it did not come back in the report to us, the variance is for side yard, front yard, and lot coverage.
Well.
So that it's a variance that you want.
Ma'am, they are, they are proposing a further distance away from your property line than what's there now. Yeah, there's less encroachment.
That's not what the plans that, that were, that I saw in front of us. So I just have an objection that they are overstepping the setback to twenty Pirate Street and the fact that there's a balcony built on the second floor overlooking our property.
Is there any way, did you get those plans by email?
I.
Looked on the website.
We've looked on the website, we received them by email from the town, they were emailed to us and also I received something from a neighbor who had something from a title company search.
Okay, but I don't have anything in front of me that shows what you're talking about.
Well, your, your office emailed them.
So is there a possibility you can forward that email to me? Or to all of us?
I would have to, I don't have a scanner in front of me right now to do that, I can do it tomorrow at my office, that's fine.
Okay, that would be appreciated, I'd like to see.
But why would I, why would I have the plans that are coming from your office and you not have those plans?
It's not our office.
That doesn't make sense to me.
It's not from us, it's from the building department. We don't have an office in the building department. Okay, we're, we're a separate judicial board.
If the Zoom meeting discussing what the building department and the variances are, what they're requesting, would you have to have those plans in front of you?
Um, I don't have the plans in front of me, no. Because it wasn't an issue as to what the elevations were, I believe initially last, the last meeting, we did get to see the elevations of the house, but I, I don't know what happened to them.
Right, so.
I would have to look through my file if you give me a second.
I mean, tomorrow I'm happy to email you all of the plans because you actually requested me to go through the town itself to review the plans and then I had copies of them emailed to me, so I can email them back to you, that's fine.
Well, this is the.
I would need your name and the email, correct email address to send to, please.
Yeah, you have to understand that, um, we're dealing with, uh, these difficulties, these obstacles. And I, I'm not able to look at anything in my possession right now currently to see what you're saying. So we, we're, we're talking about two different things, what I'm looking at and what you're talking about, I don't have.
Leroy, I did forward plans to somebody, if I know what the email address is, I can forward that to you and I can send you exactly what I sent out.
Okay, and you sent it to Janice?
I, if, if I could know the email address.
Janice, can you recite your email address?
It was sent to, hold on, yeah, it was sent to, it was Erica Camelich, but.
Erica LC three three at gmail dot com? Is that it?
I'm sorry, what, it was hard to hear you, what?
Say it again. Erica LC three three at gmail dot com?
Correct, that's where it was sent.
Okay, our administrative assistant is going to take a look at that and see if she has it. And then maybe we could take a look right here on screen, because I have my, my iPad with me and maybe I could take a peek.
Right, and it also states, it's very clear, that according to the square footage of what's allowed for the property size, you have to keep in code of building the obligated square footage to that. They went over in that square footage, that is one of the problems that we have. We don't want to see a huge house on a small piece of property.
Literally five homes on that block probably have over half the.
Well, unfortunately, maybe they never went to a meeting, you know, like.
Um, do you think.
And I'm not, that's not.
So do you think those were done without permits?
For sure, I'm in the present moment with you discussing this right now about twenty-six Pirate Street.
Right, but we're comparing comparable houses to the project.
But I'm talking about what's in the Town of Riverhead code right now, that's what we're discussing.
Well, yeah, but the square footage isn't in front of us, it's setbacks.
Right, right. So just so you know, part of the criteria for us to judge as to what the application is talking about, we do compare houses in the neighborhood and that's why the architect presented those additional houses. But I still would like to look at the plans that you're referring to that you're saying is encroaching. I want to see them.
I forwarded it to you, Leroy.
Thank you, I'll take a look. Floor point, okay, here we go.
So that, that just doesn't seem to make sense to me because everyone has had a problem with the house at the top of the street that for some reason just decided to build whatever they wanted to build and literally is powering over every single house. So what you're saying is, so someone does something wrong, gets away with it, that everyone is allowed to follow on a sweep? That just doesn't seem to make sense for rules. I'm just talking about following the Riverhead Town and Village codes and the square footage and the setbacks that are set. And that's, that's all. I don't mind a second-story house, I, we just don't want a balcony overlooking the property.
Hi, Janine.
On the side, it just doesn't make sense.
Hi, how are you? Good, how are you? Just wanted to just briefly go over this process, just so you understand. The, the whole Reeves Park area was subdivided in the probably nineteen forties. And so subsequently, the town board adopted zoning that required one acre lots. So because all of those lots are undersized and they, in addition to one acre lots, they required much larger setbacks for new, new subdivisions. So the old subdivision, the, the old lots in the subdivision now are, are, that are already built, are already non-conforming lots. And so every single thing that anyone does to any of these lots requires the zoning board of appeals, um, review because they don't comply as they stand right now. And they can't comply because these lots cannot be made to be one acre lots and the setbacks can't be made to be twenty-five feet. So that's why, and in addition, part of the criteria for the zoning board to review an application is that they need to understand, uh, whether those properties in the community are similar. So are the setbacks, are the setbacks and sizes of the homes similar? So that's why, even though, and that's why they're here and their application in fact recites all of the ways they're out of compliance, but that's just because it was built that way before the zoning was changed. So I hope that clears it up a little bit for you.
Janine, do you have the email in front of you?
No, I don't.
Okay, because on the last page, page fifteen of the email that had the application shows, it shows the survey and it shows that the new proposed house will be further away from Camelich's property than the current structure shows. So I think you need to revisit that email and take a look.
Uh, that's fine, I'll definitely revisit that, but I guess if there was another email stating the exact, uh, footage and I think that it was different information from what that one sketch was.
Okay, well, in all fairness, I think you should review it and take a look at it again. It's the last page, it shows definitely going away from the Camelich house. So, um.
The second email was floor plans, Leroy?
Yeah, I saw it.
So I think it may include the square footage from the second floor.
The floor plans are on the other email? I, I do realize that, but the square footage is, at this point, somewhat irrelevant because they're, they're asking for side yard variance and they're asking for lot coverage variance. Uh, if, if, they don't need relief for a square footage of the house.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sorry, I do not see that email, what are you telling me, the side yard differences now between the Camelich property?
Well, it was twenty feet, it's going to be twenty-three feet based on, I, I measured it with a scaled ruler. So I have a copy of the survey here, it's going to be twenty-three feet to the east, as opposed to the current structure, that's twenty feet. So it's further away, right? So it's actually further away.
Is, can the architect answer that, is that possible?
Yeah, that's what he submitted, ma'am. But he's there, let him answer.
We can put him on.
Can he speak?
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Could you verify that for me, what I just said? Or you weren't, uh, you're on to the.
On the survey for the existing house, okay? Uh, the survey done by Fox Land Surveying of the existing house. We're talking about the Westley property line, correct?
Yes.
All right. To the rear of the house, according to the survey, it's twenty-two point nine feet to the rear corner of the house, okay? To the part where the balcony is, we're proposing, and, and that balcony is only six feet by nine point nine feet, we're proposing a twenty-foot setback.
So it's closer?
No.
Yeah, it's closer by two point nine feet, but.
Okay, we do not want a balcony closer to our house, that's it.
The rest of the house is either in line with the existing house or setback further than the existing house.
We are discussing the balcony.
Okay. We, as the, if we wanted to, we could set, reposition the house and set the balcony at the same setback as twenty-two point nine feet. If we had to reposition the house, pushing it further, um, east, we would decrease that proposed seventeen point nine foot setback by the two foot and change difference and set the balcony at the current twenty-two point nine feet. So then we wouldn't further encroach.
Why, why would they want a balcony on the side of where we have our main door going in and out over our driveway with our kitchen window and not towards the back of the property where you have so much land?
So much land, there isn't a lot of, this is the design of the house, on the second floor there is a general open area, on the second floor, there's one bedroom, one bed, and an open family room area. And from that family room area, they can go out onto this very small balcony. So we, if, if the.
Nine balcony is going to be looking at us all day long.
I don't think their purpose on the balcony is to look in your window. I don't think that's going to be their main purpose.
Okay, let's not get critical here about.
Your window.
But we don't want that, we still have an objection to a balcony encroaching over whatever the allotted setback is allowed.
The allotted setback is ridiculous for a forty thousand square foot lot. That's why we're at the board to, we position the house very close to the existing footprint of the existing house so the non-conformities, the changes would be very minimal. That's why the house is where it is, to not impact a major change on the property. If the board requires us to set the balcony to the existing setback of the existing house of twenty-two point nine feet and push the house further to the east to put that point of the house at the same distance it is now, we will do that.
That's what I'm requesting, thank you.
Well, there's still the balcony there.
The architect, sir, I'm just going to ask you a question, the architect? If you push the house to the east, um, what, two, three, two, three feet? Then you're going to have only a fourteen point nine setback from that easterly properly, property line?
Yes. Or, as I said, the, the, this balcony isn't there to look in the neighbor's window, so I feel.
That's rhetoric, that's rhetoric right there.
No, it's the truth.
No, no, sir, sir, it's there and access for people to be on. So why, maybe we should just, I could request, if I'm allowed to, I would request not to have a balcony on the side where you're looking into people's yards.
There are some pretty heavy, heavily wooded trees along that property line though, am I correct?
Yes.
There, there, there. There, 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 there's an evergreen, there's some low, there's some low bushes and there's very overgrown. There's, once they clear the property there in order to build, there, there will not be.
Well, they, they have no reason to clear the property line.
They would have to in or, I don't know if you've been there recently.
Yes, today.
You cannot get through the front driveway because it is overgrown with trees and bushes. So they're going to have to clear it.
If the, if the board uh would condition that there's a special type of uh arborvitae species called the green giant, they grow three feet a year in height. They grow extremely quickly. If the board would condition that that has to be planted on the side yard, we would agree to that and in a matter of a, a couple of years, they would be blocking any view into the kitchen.
Will you have in-ground sprinklers put in because the only way that arborvitae will survive would be with in-ground sprinklers?
I think they're gonna be living there full time, right?
Yes, a retirement house. But we would, we would condition that they have to put a specific type of arborvitae called green giant, which I happen to have on my property and they grow three feet per year.
I have them also.
We would, we would condition that they be put on that property line to Ms. Loosner's satisfaction to screen the kitchen window.
Is that agreeable to you? That's a very neighborly proposal. Janine, is that agreeable to you?
Yes, and I would, yeah, as long as I'd like to see the plans and I'd like to see um the landscaping plans as well. Uh, because they, they are going to have, in order to do that, there's, they will have to clear the property of a lot of trees there. So if they have a topography of some kind of landscape plan that they'd like to share with me, I would love to see that.
Mr. Jacobs, is it Jacob?
You could, you could be there when they actually place the evergreens before they plant them.
Well, I, you know, unfortunately, I'd like to see something in writing. Um, I just can't take someone's word on this.
Well, it is in writing if it's a condition, ma'am.
To be quite honest with you, no matter what, they should certainly want to land those, them, those trees, whether or not you move the balcony over the three feet that's required. Because they certainly don't want to look at our cars all day long or our kitchen or where we access the house in and out multiple times. So it would be conducive for them to do that.
Janine, any, anything that you're gonna, anything that we all agree on tonight will be in the resolution. And that will be in writing. And that's in writing. So are you comfortable with the arborvitae, the green giants?
I know for a fact that it has to have in-ground sprinklers because I work with this topography quite often. So that would have to be part of the contract in writing. So and we know that they are going to grow successfully.
It's part of the conditions if we grant it. It's in writing.
Okay, Jacob, Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
I'm Otto Whitmire. I'm listening to all this and uh, Mr. Seabrook asked about the seventeen point nine setback on uh, I guess the east side, is that it?
Yeah.
Yes.
And you said if you move that so that you were within the twenty-two point nine on the west side, uh, we'd lose three feet over there. So that would become fourteen nine. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you know how close that a house next to this one is? Seems like on the plan that you gave, it's quite a distance away, the house next door.
I don't know how exactly far away that is. I would have to go there. This site plan uh was given to me by the secretary to the zoning board and it was on an eight and a half by eleven sheet and I blew it up on my copy machine. So I don't exactly know how accurate that is.
So let's just say.
Seems the same distance on both sides.
Let's just say we have the house moved. We'll grant the variance.
Exactly.
For the east side, we'll grant the variance for the west side. We'll grant the variance with the condition that the arborvitae will be placed. And uh, we'll leave it at that. Is everybody happy with that?
I, I mean, that sounds fair, but I would like to know that the arborvitae, you know, are going to grow successfully. So, you know, I've seen it done, un- unfortunately, where someone just throws them in and they turn brown because they're not being taken care of.
They, they do need to be watered initially.
The whole point is, I just want to, I just wanna know that they're gonna grow successfully.
Janine?
Yeah.
Janine, you're gonna be living with these people right next door to you. So I would think if they're gonna invest two, three, four hundred dollars per tree, I would think they're gonna wanna water them. So I, I, you know, that's just common courtesy and common sense to do those kinds of things.
That, that, exactly, and that's what I'm suggesting.
I, I really don't think we can condition that they put sprinklers in, but they could hose them every night and attach them to a hose and sprinkle it that way. I mean, there's all different ways to do that, but I don't think they wanna blow their investment.
Yes, there's, there's in-ground sprinklers to water the trees.
Okay, okay. So I think with us requiring the planting of those trees and moving the house to the east is reasonable, more than reasonable.
Yes, that does sound reasonable. I agree.
Would you need a new survey?
The owners, the owners are here too.
It's gonna have to recite, it's gonna have to repost. Um, I don't know where Mr. Renner is. Lower right.
Okay, let's hear him. He's on now?
Annette Renner?
Hello, Mr. Renner, how are you?
It's Annette. It's Mrs. Renner.
I'm sorry, they said mister.
Listening with great interest.
Hold on, hold on now, just, I have to swear to you in. Just raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help to God.
I do.
Thank you.
Say your name and your address.
Twenty-six, Annette Renner, twenty-six Pirate Street.
Can you get closer to the microphone, Mrs. Renner?
I'm sorry?
Closer to the microphone.
Yes, certainly. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
I'd just like to address Janine's issues. Um, uh, your grandmother, your father, um, have always looked in my kitchen window and I always considered that a plus because I treasured them as neighbors. Um, I know that you don't live there all year round and I know that you come in the summer times and you, your permanent residence is in Cold Spring Harbor. And I certainly would never want to cause you any problems with thinking that I will be looking into your windows. The point of the balcony was just to get a little sunlight because there is a balcony on the north side along the, on the first floor along the back. But just to get a little sun, once in a while, I can go out and do my crossword puzzle with a cup of coffee. I won't be out there all day. And uh, it's, uh, the most of the living uh is gonna be on the first floor where you can, I welcome you to look into my kitchen windows. And Janine, I know the place looks terrible now and I'm mortified at the condition of the yard, but you know as well as your grandmother and your father did before you that I, once I live there, those, those grounds will be manicured to perfection. Janine, dear, anything? Any response?
Annette, thank you for speaking and it's nice to um hear from you. But, you know, we, my father diligently did plant, you know, beautiful evergreen kind of bushes.
And we enjoy.
To create privacy between. And we've never said anything about the property for all of the years that we have been there. And we're actually planning that to be our permanent residence.
Are you really?
So, but this is.
Are you really? You're gonna make fire here?
Looking into people's windows, to be quite honest with you, we should all enjoy our privacy. We're, we're experiencing a pandemic, COVID, and I think privacy now in twenty twenty is more important than anything, so.
All my windows will have curtains on them.
I don't need looking into anybody's windows and I prefer no one to be looking into my windows, so.
You have curtains too, Janine.
That's also in, no.
You do. Very pretty ones. And you've been looking like I said into my windows all these years.
To be quite honest with you, I, I really have not.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, we're, we're getting, we're getting a little out of control here.
This conversation is becoming very redundant and silly at this point in time. So let's get down to making some kind of concrete decisions to make in this meeting productive.
I think if we, if we plant the, the proper plants where they should be and they're gonna grow three feet a year, I think we, I think we have a deal here.
If that's in writing, I'm agreeable to that.
It'll be, it'll be in the decision.
May I talk for a second, please?
Sure.
Well, we're agreeing to put in the green giant arborvitae. Does the board still want me to revise the plot plan to show the house appro, moved approximately three feet to the west? Or will, or can we leave it in the current location and just plant, which is twenty feet, and just plant the arborvitae?
Leroy?
I, I would, I would say that the house is more equally balanced in, in the center of the property.
Weight is now.
Yeah, weight is now.
Plus the trees are gonna take care of the view.
Yeah. If you move it over to the right, you're going to, you're gonna create a very.
I, I don't, I don't really care as long as everybody's agreeable.
Yeah.
Um, I, I hate to see them move it and then have to repost in public hearing again.
Leave it with.
And it's a big.
With three things.
I think leave it, leave it and put the, put the plantings in.
Yes.
And that would be a condition.
So, so we can leave the house location where we propose it now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we will add the arborvitae as required.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, Mr. Chairman, would you think we should do a reserve decision?
Let's do a reserve decision, yes.
And then we'll write in writing what that is. And then, uh, Janet, so you know that, um, Janine, excuse me. Just so you know that the, the determination will be filed in the town clerk's office typically within ten days of the determination. So at our next board meeting, we're gonna read into the record the reserve decision. And then from there, if you're not on, if you're not, you know, satisfied with any of the conditions, then you can do what you need to do legally. I hope that you're satisfied with what we're proposing.
So how do I find out exactly, you know, what is the landscaping plan? How many arborvitae?
Um, what we'll do is we'll put it in the resolution. And um, I, I believe that uh, we have, we have a planning aide in the planning department. Maybe uh, we can run that by the planning aide and see if uh, the architect can develop a quick drawing as to what arborvitae shall be planted, how high they will be.
Yeah, that would be, uh, I'd like to know what the height would be, correct? Thank you.
So Carissa, would you follow through on that?
I will.
So our assistant has agreed to do that. So it will be drawn up and approved or voted on uh, the next board meeting, which I believe is the next board meeting, Carissa?
Twenty-seven.
August twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven.
August twenty-seventh, we'll, we'll vote on that, that resolution. It's called a reserve decision.
August twenty-seventh?
Yes. Once that's done, you can easily get a copy of it. We, we can provide a copy via email to you.
Okay, and when, if everything is approved, would they start demolition and construction?
Do what? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
If everything is approved, when will they start demolition and construction?
That's really up to them. The permit, then, then our decision goes over to the building department. They review the building plans and then they issue the permit. I don't know what their schedule is. It could be weeks, months, it could be next week. I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, I, I guess I was trying to get an idea of when, at what point in time during the construction are the arborvitae planted?
I would, I would think they would wanna do that towards the end.
End of it.
And, and when it's appropriate, when they're supposed to be planted. Probably in the fall is the best time. But they also can plant them in the spring, from what I understand, and they do grow rapidly.
Okay.
All right?
All right, so I will look forward to the twenty-seventh.
I will too.
Okay.
Me too.
Thank you for your comments and your concerns. And Mrs. Renner, good luck to you on your new home. And I hope you all get along as neighbors.
Okay.
It's gonna be work, but you're gonna have to do it.
I hear motion for a reserve decision on appeal number two thousand twenty dash eighteen.
So movement, Chairman.
Second, August twenty-seventh.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Gazel?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we'll talk to you folks at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
August twenty-seventh.
What?
Huh?
Hello?
Hello?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs?
Okay, Clarissa.
Was there anybody else to speak on that one?
I think everybody's off. It's closed anyway. We voted, so we're done. No more comments. No more comments. On twenty-six Pirate Street.
Okay, Clarissa, let's go.
Appeal number twenty twenty fourteen, Allison Kenzig, sixty-three Cliff Road East, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred twenty-seven three thirty-three. RB eighty zoning for variances under a relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one. Where proposed impervious surface is forty-one point two percent and maximum allowed is fifteen percent. Where proposed rear yard setback is ten point seven feet and minimum required is seventy-five feet. Where proposed side yard setbacks are six point seven and nine point seven feet and minimum required on each side is thirty feet. And where proposed combined side yard is sixteen point four feet and minimum required is sixty-five feet.
Okay, who do you have up for this one?
Definitely Lou Gallo.
Okay, Mr. Gallo. Just unmute yourself. There you go. Just raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help to God. Okay, just, let me state your name and your address.
Unmu, Mr. Gallo, unmute yourself.
Unmute, unmute it.
Okay, Lou Gallo, Expediting Incorporated, two eighteen Harrison Avenue, Miller Place, agent for the owner.
Okay, state your case.
For you, uh, members of the board, is a home uh, that I wanna impress upon you two very important concepts. First, this house was built in nineteen forty-two. Uh, before even COs were even permissible in the town of Riverhead, which was of course nineteen sixty-five. Uh, it has been owned by the present family trust since nineteen eighty-two. In fact, the owners that are living there now, Bill Kenzig, uh, he'll be about seventy years old in the next month. And Kathleen will be sixty-eight next week. And I, I raise that point because this is gonna be their final nest egg. They live on Gladys Road and Waiting River right now and they wanna move into this home. Uh, Bill's mother owned the home for thirty years. Bill, of course, now is the owner. It's a small piece, as you can see from the survey, it's sixty by a hundred. But uh, because the, of the situation when this house was built in forty-two, uh, you can see as a result of that small lot, it would never be present zoning even today. So any attempts to improve the lot are going to run into some kind of uh substantial variances, which is, you can see, exist on the survey. So in that regard, we have a unique disadvantage. Uh, if you take a look at the pictures I presented to you, pictures one through five, give you an idea not only of the home and its small size, but the area of construction for the proposed uh addition in the rear. And as you can see, it's well-screened, particularly in the rear yard, well-screened also on the west side of, of the home, uh, on the property line there too. So in that regard, there's really no adverse impact. So despite the, the unique disadvantage that we have, it doesn't give us much to actually jockey. Uh, we try to follow the contour of the house. So despite the, the unique disadvantage that we have, it doesn't give us much to actually jockey. Uh, we try to follow the contour of the house as best as we possibly could. Uh, but again, uh, even if you look at the original house, one side yard is only seven point one feet, so, uh, there's not much you could do if you build straight out or to the side. The second thing I wanna impress upon you is a practical difficulty. I also submitted to the board, and you have it in your possession, a, a letter written by Dr. Asia Patnick, who is Kathleen's, uh, Kathleen's internist, and she has very serious medical problems, as you can see. Most importantly, she has difficulty with ambulation, and she's very high for risk. Consequently, the project that you see on that survey, uh, has to be managed in such a way that there's enough room for her. The present home on Gladys Road is much too difficult to manage right now. She cannot negotiate the stairwells. She does use a walker, and in the future, it looks like she's gonna be in a wheelchair. So as a result, this project, which includes fifteen hundred square feet that you see before you, includes a kitchen, it includes a laundry room, it includes two bedrooms, one master bed, and of course, the covered porch to allow some kind of recreation, particularly for Kathleen, so that she could leave the home. There's no way she can negotiate stairs to go outside or anything in that manner. It'd be very difficult for her, so as a result, that's the concept of the covered porch. Uh, the project has four foot wide hallways between the two bedrooms. One bedroom's on one side, another's on another. We have thirty-six inch wide, um, bedroom doors. We have wide French doors for her to get out into the covered porch. And as a result, we're just following the contour of the house and yet tailoring the project to her medical needs as best as we possibly could. So no matter how you cut it, if you reduce it, it may create some tremendous difficulty for particularly Kathleen, and that's why we're proposing it very carefully in the manner in which you see it. I also showed you pictures, uh, numbers six and seven, and you can see that in the immediate neighborhood, uh, two houses down, seventy-five Fifth Road East, captions are on the back, uh, there is a covered porch back there, and, uh, around the block, on the next street, seventy-seven Cedar Road, uh, there is also a covered porch there. So in the immediate neighborhood, there is some conformity to the character of the neighborhood. Uh, it's not such an undesirable proposal that we make here before the board, and so consequently, uh, there's no undesirable change. I understand from the Kenzigs that the immediate neighbors are supportive of the project, and I would say that to the board, if you could please, uh, in your best estimation, uh, we implore that respectfully request that the board grant the release.
Okay. Is there anyone else on there to be heard about this? Okay. So anyone else wanna speak on this project? Just unmute. Anyone else wanna speak on this project? No?
Sorry, I'm, are you directing the count question to me?
No, not to you, no. I'm just checking out, is there anyone else on this, on this variance that wants to speak? All you have to do is unmute and let us know.
Can you hear us? Raise your hands, please. No. So you can hear us.
How about Shelby?
And you can hear us, so you have no comments. Thank you.
How about Shelby Coleman?
How about Jessica Smith? Okay.
That's it?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Who's got the reading?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I moved at the appeal of Allison Kenzig, sixty-three Cliff Road East, Waiting River, tax map six hundred dash twenty-seven dash three dash three-three, RB eighty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed impervious surface is forty-one point two percent and maximum allowed is fifteen percent. Where proposed rear yard setback is ten point seven feet and minimum required is seventy-five feet. Where proposed side yard setbacks are six point seven feet and nine point seven feet and minimum required on each side is thirty feet, and where proposed combined side yard is sixteen point four feet and minimum required is sixty-five feet. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote ayes. So your appeal has been granted. Best of luck with, uh, taking care of everything for that family, Mr. Gallo.
Nice presentation, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you so much.
Have a good one.
Clarissa? You're on.
Appeal number twenty twenty twenty-one, Michael Kelly, Cliff Road West, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred twenty-six one thirty-five point two, RB eighty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where existing lot is twenty thousand square feet and minimum required is eighty thousand square feet. Where proposed front yard setback is thirty feet and minimum required is sixty feet, and where proposed rear yard setback is thirty-five feet and minimum required is seventy-five feet.
All right, who's on for this? Top left. Please, if you kindly raise, do you unmute yourself? Can, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help be God.
I do, thank you.
Just state your name and your address.
Yes, Larry Davis, uh, the Law Office of Davis and Prager, one seventy-five Oak Street, Patchard, New York, for the applicant.
Okay.
Um, thank you for having us this evening. Um, this is a twenty thousand square foot parcel at the very end of Cliff Road West. It's at the very north end, right before the cul-de-sac. We're seeking variances to construct a single-family residence. Um, there are, the reasons for the variances are the lot is twenty thousand square foot in eighty, in eighty thousand square foot zone, and looking at the nature of the cha- the character and nature of the neighborhood, most of the lots in this entire area do not meet the, um, eighty thousand square foot zoning, and are actually smaller than the lots that we are proposing to be built on. It's only a hundred foot in depth, therefore the practical difficulty of needing the front yard and the rear yard setbacks. So, um, in essence, what we're asking for is just relief from the code because we cannot meet the zoning. Um, we do have a practical difficulty. It was not self-created, as this is the way the lot existed. Uh, the lot and the house to be built will conform with the general character and nature of the neighborhood. Uh, there are no environmental in, um, issues that, um, are to be concerned with, and as far as the neighborhood, this will be, have very little impact, and like I said, it's at the very dead end of that street, and there were really no environmental issues. Um, the board has any questions? I'd be able, able to answer them at this time, please.
Okay, so the proposed owners are, what's their name?
The proposed owner is, um, a developer, Michael Kelly of Kelly Development.
Okay.
He's, he's a contract vendor that is looking to purchase this lot.
I see. So the house is going to be a speculation? A spec?
Uh, as, as at this point, he does not have it sold. He will be, um, I, I think I've supplied the board with the schematic of what the house will look like as far as the elevation and the moon layout.
Looks very nice.
Um, yes, it will be a spec house at this point, and hoping to, you know, with the market the way it is, to have a quick sale.
Okay. All right, so.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Shelby Coleman, Jessica Smith. Nobody? Okay.
I moved at the appeal of Michael Kelly, Cliff Road West, Waiting River, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash twenty-six dash one dash thirty-five point two, RB eighty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where existing lot is twenty thousand square feet and minimum required is eighty thousand square feet. Where proposed front yard setback is thirty and minimum required is sixty feet, and where proposed rear yard setback is thirty-five and minimum required is seventy-five feet. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote ayes. So your appeal has been granted, and, you know, a move from now, just, all the paperwork should be done in about two weeks, so take it from there.
Terrific. Thank you very much. You all have a good evening.
Have a good night. Take care. Clarissa.
Appeal number twenty twenty twenty-two, Robert Genulis, five seventy-three Soundshore Road, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred seven three forty-four, RA eighty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section twenty-one A one A, where existing garage is located in front yard, which is not permitted.
Okay. I would suggest both of you raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help be God. Just.
You don't.
Yes, okay. State your names and your addresses.
Robert Genulis, five seventy-three Soundshore, Riverhead.
Green the Clario Genulis, five seventy-three Soundshore Road, Riverhead, New York.
State your case.
Uh, we live on a very large, unique parcel right off of Soundshore Road. We have a singular driveway, not a flaglock, uh, roughly sixteen hundred feet long off of the face of the road with a twenty-foot wide extension. We have a home built on five point one acres at the top of the hill. Um, we're very private, nobody even knows we're here. We have built a garage, the measurements are thirty by thirty-two, and we put it catty-cornered to the front of the house. Um, it does not infringe on any neighbors. In fact, we have no neighbors. Our nearest neighbor is Mary Smith, who is almost nine acres away. Our rear neighbor is the Wells Farm, which is well over fourteen acres away, and our closest neighbor on the adjacent side of the street is Anthony Russo. He is now across the street, but on two acres of his own. We also have a verbal statement from Mr. Steinkent, who is next door to Mr. Russo, and Mary Smith, who is at the bottom of our driveway. Nobody has any intrusions on this garage. This garage is not bored next to any other properties. It would not be intrusive by noise, gasoline, sounds. Our nearest neighbor is actually the sound, the town of Suffolk County. The land before us was previously owned by Dr. Gorman and purchased by Suffolk County to continue the park, which is now part of, part of North Fork County Park. Our house is literally in the middle of the park. We have no physical neighbors to speak of. We've sent out all of our forms. We sent out our letters. I have my return receipts. I have put my sign up on the road, and I have not heard any complaints nor any objections from any of the neighbors. In fact, the one thing I did get was a phone call from one of my neighbors saying, "What garage?" So that's, that's pretty much where we are. So we're looking for the variance that we put a catty-cornered in the front of the house, as you can see on our survey.
Okay. So, hold on one second. Uh, Jessica Smith. Are you there? Jessica Smith, would you unmute? Can you hear us? She disappeared?
She left.
Okay.
Who's Shelby? Do they wanna be heard, or they're just hanging out? So. Can I ask a question? Did you, did you build?
Certainly.
Did you build the garage without the benefit of a building permit?
Yes, sir.
And are, are you selling the property now? Is that why you're legalizing it, or you just got caught?
Yes, we are.
You're selling?
No, no. No, we're selling the property.
No, it's very nice back there. It's beautiful. Not very private, though.
What year is that carpet?
Thank you. We've had, oh my goodness, you saw, it's a seventy-three. Oh my goodness, you saw the.
Yeah, I hope, you know, we were in your yard.
She's one of our pride beams.
Today, so I hope you don't think.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Somebody being lost, so, but, uh, it's a very nice property. Um, I don't think anybody really cares because you're all around county preserve property, so I, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, again, I'll ask anyone else that's on the, the, uh, the Zoom, if they have anything to say, please unmute and say your piece. Nobody? Okay, let's have a reading.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I moved at the appeal of Robert Genulis, five seventy-three Soundshore Road, six hundred dash seven dash three dash forty-four. It's located in the RA eighty zoning district for variances and for relief from chapter three oh one, section twenty-one A one A, where an existing garage is located in the front yard, which is not permitted. Be approved in accordance with the application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. Okay. Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote ayes. So your appeals are granted, and best of luck in your endeavors.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient tonight.
Have a nice evening.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do I hear a motion to accept the mea, the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.